Good afternoon, everyone. Would you like to call the meeting to order? Hey, order. Someone tell Sam we're ready to start.
Whenever you're ready, sir.
I'm ready.
We can see that.
That's why we had to cut you off, because I'd be gone for a while, otherwise. Anyway. Welcome to all of you. It is 4:30 on March 3rd. I'd like to begin this meeting calling it to order. And as is our tradition, I'd like to ask you to stand and join me for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, could we have a roll call, please?
Pete Hamel, Sean Brewster.
Here.
Brad Hand.
Here.
Wayne Barahona.
Here.
Tom Eggers.
Here.
All right, moving forward then to our approval of the agenda. Support? Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hand?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
All right, at this point, we've reached the public forum session section of our agenda. Are there anyone, is there anyone here that wants to speak? If so, I need to read something before you start. You may come forward. I just want to read a little, give you a few instructions. As you come to the podium, state your name and address. I'll tell you when. Just give me a couple of minutes here. If you have any handouts, please give them to the city clerk. Be concise and limit your comments to four minutes. You may not save your time for later or yield the remainder of your time to someone else. After speaking, then we ask that you would please be seated. If you are addressing a matter that's on the agenda, state the agenda item you were speaking about. And if you're speaking on more than one agenda item, arrange your comments in chronological order. Try not to duplicate any information that has already been presented. And direct your comments to the entire council, not to an individual. Questions and issues raised during this time will generally not be answered. We'll get to you later. Maintain a courteous and respectful manner. And if you are a presenter on an item which has been formally placed on the council agenda, this public forum process does not apply to you now, although you are asked to be succinct in your presentation. Iowa law requires certain matters to have public hearings which have their own comment periods. Comments pertaining to a public hearing item should be saved for that item, and the four-minute comment period will also apply to that item. So thank you for joining us. Please state your name.
April Meyer.
Sheldon?
I actually live outside of Hospers.
Okay.
But I am here to speak about item F, which is the property cleanup for 420 North Second Avenue.
Okay.
This property is owned by my mother. And my brother uses the property, which has his belongings on it, which are cluttered. And I just came to speak and hear about the plans for that, but he's been working on the clutter since we got a letter on Thursday. So Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we've gotten 75% of the items that they're worried about cleaned up. And I just wanted to make the council aware of that. And I know that my brother has had some of the city guys over to observe some of that and talk to them about that. We don't have a formal letter stating a time period to finish the cleanup, so we're just kind of here to make sure we're aware of how much longer they're going to give us to finish cleaning it up. But we're trying to do it in a timely process.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Nope, just one little more time. Thanks.
What I would suggest is that we move that item to a separate discussion, if that's all right with you. Off the consent agenda to a separate discussion item.
Yep.
Okay. With that understanding, those of you that have made a motion to approve it, is that all right with you to approve the agenda if we separate that out? From the, no, we got the consent agenda, we got to approve that yet. So if we move... Yes. Yeah. So, all right. Are there any other comments from anyone, either here or listening in on Zoom? I see nothing happening there, so I'm going to assume that that's all there is. All right, then, let's move on to the consent agenda. Approval of that. And I think with the understanding that we separate out item F for a separate discussion.
I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus F for separate consultation.
Support? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hand?
Hi.
Barahona?
Hi.
Eggers?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
All right, then let's move on to discussion regarding item 4F, the resolution authorizing advancement of the cost for the urban renewal project for 420 North Second Avenue. Sam, any comments you'd like to make at this time?
Thank you, Mayor. And I really appreciate Nancy and April coming today to this meeting. And basically, what this agenda item does is identify as a funding source for the enforcement of a very large nuisance issue. It began before my time. Corey Ostaber has been very friendly, very open to dealing with me. He always takes my phone calls. But he also always needs more time. And so we're getting to the point where it really needs to be cleaned up. And the idea behind this was to take that next step and ratchet it up, which I've done. So, and it seems to be working because in the last several days, there has been significant cleanup. So, you know, as long as that cleanup continues, and we don't revert backwards, there isn't a need for me to go to MICA and issue the, work with him on the official notices. But it's to the point now where I wanted to get this in place. I didn't want to use local option sales tax for the enforcement. I'd rather use urban renewal. Clearly, it fits as an urban renewal project. And I wanted to be able to simply move forward without any further delay or worrying about the funding source for it, because it needs to be cleaned up. The neighbors are upset about it and have been for some time. It was a problem for the previous city manager. I've sent half a dozen letters, and it's time. So I guess the short answer to April's testimony is, and her question is, is that if indeed 75% has been cleaned up, I can wait a while longer. But we need to have it all cleaned up. I'm okay with a, with, you know, a couple of campers sitting there as long as they're on the concrete with licenses and, you know, a few other items. But it's, it can't, it can't be what it's, what it's been. This is an arterial commercial zone. It is not an industrial level junkyard. And ironically, on that note, we have some areas on Western Avenue that if they would go to the Board of Adjustment, they could actually have a junkyard there. But I've asked them to clean up because they haven't done that. And so if it's not allowed over there, it's definitely not allowed here because a junkyard is not allowed in the arterial commercial zone. And the Board of Adjustment does not have the authority to grant it because it's not even allowed in the zoning at all. So that's where we stand.
Is there any sort of benchmark that you could say that would help as far as advising the Ostaberes? You know, they want more time, but we need to be able to say what needs to happen within X timeframe. I know they made the comment of 75% being cleaned up, but I suppose we need to actually, you know, have concrete steps in place because, yeah, it seems like we've been kicking this can down the road for a long time.
Well, in answer to your question, Wayne, if all the automotive parts are, the loose parts are gone, all the tires, if all the tires are gone, Todd and I weren't able to drive in the back the other day because it was simply too muddy. We didn't walk back there either. But all the gravity flow wagons, all the unlicensed vehicles, all the boats, you know, once all that's gone, and if, and if there's a couple of campers left and a few other items, then it's really, it's really no different than, you know, than other businesses in the arterial commercial zone.
So now I'll direct this kind of to you guys. Would it be, do you think that you'd be able to comply with what our city manager is saying, that we'll be able to get the property to that point by the time we have our next council meeting in two weeks? Do you think that that would be sufficient amount of time to do that?
Corey and I are leaving for Arkansas tomorrow for family members.
Nancy, if you wouldn't mind stepping up here to the microphone so we can get it on the video.
Corey and I are leaving tomorrow. We've talked to Sam about that. We've got a funeral in Arkansas that we got to go to. And we'll be back Monday, and then we'll start on it again.
Okay. I guess getting back to my question, is that, do you think by two weeks from today, you can get the property into such condition that...
I think that's given us time.
Okay.
Or at least, could it be two weeks from Monday when we get back from Arkansas?
I think I'm comfortable leaving that in Sam's hands as far as establishing, you know, the terms and conditions of where it is on a particular day. And I think, I speak on behalf of the council when I say we trust what Sam says in regards of being our nuisance manager. So I guess I'm okay with that, Sam, if that sounds like an appropriate course of action for you.
Two weeks from Monday?
Monday.
Seems reasonable.
Okay.
So Sam, is it still your recommendation that we go ahead with this resolution to put these funds in place in case that does not happen?
You know, if we want to keep it, I'm okay either way. I, we could certainly continue this to the March 24 meeting and put it on old, on old business and decide then.
I think I'm, I'm okay with continuing this to the next meeting.
Okay. Well, that won't be the next meeting. That would be, right? I don't know. That would be the next meeting.
Well, we move your March 17 meeting to March 24.
But technically, the next meeting would be March 10.
Right, but that's really...
So I think if we just say the 24th.
The 24th, sure.
Which actually gives the owners an extra week to, if we're using the next council meeting. So that should fit your request for starting at the Monday you return. So... Okay, then I guess we need no action on this resolution then.
If I, if I might ask Brad Hand a question. Brad, if I can ask you a question, I know I'm kind of catching you off guard on this. But one of the things that came up when Todd and I were there is that Corey has quite a few tires on the roof that he, that he had put up there to hold things down. Do you see it as an issue from a, it's not an issue from my perspective, from a nuisance perspective. Do you see that as an issue from a fire department?
Just adds more weight to the roof, that the roof isn't intended to hold tires. The other thing, as a nuisance, and this goes back when we, or goes to when we get warmer out, your tires have water in them, and mosquitoes breed in tires. So I also think that's an issue, too. So I would say tires, the roofs are not intended to hold that many tires. So yes, I would say it could be a hazard.
I don't know if that's something that you were aware of, all the tires on the roof?
Yeah.
So maybe when we talk about this again on the 24th, I'm kind of catching you off guard on this now, if you wouldn't mind letting us know the status of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the tires is not part of the cleanup nuisance-wise?
It doesn't need, it doesn't need to be. I can't, I can't see them. I only know they're there because SCDC had drone footage.
Right.
That showed them, so.
So in terms of compliance with the 24th deadline?
No, I'm not worried about it.
Okay. But it does need to be addressed. Yeah. Okay.
Basically, all we're doing with this resolution is paving the way to keep the ball rolling. For Sam.
It's putting in place financing for him to determine if he needs it.
And if they clean it up, then it's null and void.
That's why I asked whether you wanted to go through with the resolution, but he's recommending that.
I'm okay either way.
I just can keep moving on with it.
You could certainly approve the resolution, and I will report back status in my city manager's report as to how things are going.
Well, and it's not like, if, if we're still setting a deadline for the 24th, all you need is the resolution and the funds are instantly available, right? That's, so it's not like it's something that we'd have to vote on and then wait weeks to get money. It's, so I think if we've already given that grace period, I think we could probably just wait to make that determination at that time.
Okay.
I don't think that hurts anything.
And there has been a show of good faith in terms of getting the 75, your 75% complete now. We appreciate that. And we like, look forward to having it, see it through to the end, you know, and so that we can come back on the 24th. We do have that report that it's been taken care of. It's no longer a nuisance, so. And if you're like me, you work best with a deadline. So now it's, now it's there. We'll come back to it again on the 24th. We need a, we're just going to table it then, correct? So we'll table that and deal with it then. Does that answer all your questions? Okay. Thank you for coming, keeping us up to date on what's going on, and keep up the good work. All right, thanks.
So we're going to move this to the 24th.
Table it till the discussion on the 24th, yes. All right, then we think are ready to move on to our item five, the economic development housing updates. And who's taking care of that? Abby, oh, I see her there. Abby, you need to unmute yourself. She's addressing a spy Zoom. Hi, Abby, welcome. The floor is yours.
The floor is mine. So I was supposed to tell you a little bit about an opportunity that is available to you. It's the Rural Housing Readiness Assessment. And you guys have been doing some work in housing. We're kind of, Sam and Kurt had mentioned that you were kind of debating between participating in the Rural Housing Readiness Assessment program, or going ahead and doing a housing needs assessment, and asked if I would explain kind of what would be the difference between the two. So a housing needs assessment, what I charge to do these things, which I'm not doing right at the moment, but I normally charge between $10,000 and $20,000 a pop for this, and it takes, you know, six or eight months to do it. And you get an exhaustive amount of statistical data, statistical data that you may or may not ever use, but it is every piece of statistical data that has anything to do with your community and housing needs. What we find, however, is working with communities, that a lot of times just getting a housing needs assessment becomes the be-all and end-all. And once they have that document, it just, it's paralysis by analysis. So the Iowa Economic Development Authority kind of helped us create this program to kind of help communities catalyze implementing projects that actually move you forward on the priorities that you want to achieve for housing. Because even though a study can tell you everything under the sun about your housing needs in your community, at the gut level, you already know what you want to do. You really just want to catalyze action. You want to get the stakeholders together who are relevant to the projects that you want to do. You want them all on the same page. You want them using the same data. You want discussions. You want things that are facilitated. You want to come up with priorities and action plans. So what the Rural Housing Readiness Assessment is a grant that's available through the Empower Rural Iowa Office of the Iowa Economic Development Authority. The deadline for this is April 1st. For $5,000, you get the equivalent pretty much of a housing needs assessment, but it's really four workshops. The first two workshops, and everything's virtual, the first two workshops talk about the statistical analysis of your community, looking at all the things that determine need for housing in your community, workforce housing, senior housing, population trends, commuting patterns. All of that is covered in the first session. The second session looks at best practices for communities that are under 10,000 population. What has been successful in Iowa? Not what they do in New York, not what they do in California. What has been successful in Iowa for communities of a similar size to Sheldon. And then we have a community survey that is up for distribution for a month after those first two sessions. And that, that community survey alone is something that's usually worth $10,000. But this particular community survey, we're looking at asking people about their housing plans for the future, looking at people who currently live in Sheldon and asking, do you plan on retiring here? If you're retiring here, what kind of housing are you looking for? What price points are you looking for? Would you be interested in upgrading, downsizing? Those kinds of questions. And then we also take a look at people who work in your community but don't live in your community. What would it take to get your workforce to live in your community? Our studies show that within 40 months, if an employee hasn't located housing in your community, they quit that job and find something closer to where they live, or they move to where their job is. So we want to try to capture as much of our workforce and retain as much of our workforce, because that's another problem that we are facing in rural Iowa. So after we get the results from that survey, we have two final virtual sessions. The first one is full strategic planning. The first one looks at your big vision for what you want to accomplish for housing in your community, just big outcomes that you want to achieve. And then the second one is all on the action plan, selecting the three or four projects that you want to move forward with, setting up teams to do that, plotting that out on a timeline. Then after all of that is done, we take about a month to research your top priorities so that we can provide you with additional information, linking you with resources, giving you examples of the types of projects that have been successful, that are aligned with what you choose to do for your priorities. And you get that all as a big report. The cost for this is $5,000. But here's the deal. If you complete the program, you get the $5,000 back plus another $5,000 from IEDA to put toward whatever you want to do to start one of those projects moving forward. So for example, Ida Grove had several, used their money to tear down several abandoned mobile homes and two abandoned houses so that they could put three or four new manufactured housing units in. Manning is using their money to do a new subdivision, which requires them to do annexation. So they're going to use some of their money for some of those costs, like legal, survey work, things that they would have to pay other people to do to kind of get that project moving. Stanton is looking at multifamily housing, doing a project for senior citizens, independent living for senior citizens. So that's what they're doing. So every community kind of picks something from their list, and then they use that money to kind of get started. But the other thing is that once IEDA is aware of the projects that you want to do, they start funneling you into the pipeline of resources to accomplish those. So it's a way for IEDA to help you think through what you want to do, and then link you up with the financial resources to accomplish what you identified in your plan. Does anyone have any questions? Did I bore you to death?
No, I'm intrigued. You have intrigued me very much. So, so we get, so I heard the number 5,000 a couple of different times. So run me through those numbers again. We pay 5,000, but we get it back? Is that?
We get it back at the end with another 5,000 added to it. So it's a total of 10,000 that you get at the end. It's pretty much because IEDA, they're using CDBG money for some of this.
Sure.
And so they're trying to meet the rules, you know, on what percentage of money that they have out for technical assistance versus direct assistance. So they kind of, it's IEDA moving money from one pot to another. And they always make sure with most communities that they work with, with IEDA programs, CDBG, even IFA programs, that they always want a local community to show that they have some skin in the game. So this is your skin, but you get your skin back at the end.
Sure. What kind of timeline from, from start, from the word "go" until the completed assessment would we be looking at?
Well, the first two sessions, the educational sessions, you can do those pretty much back-to-back. Some committees, some communities have committees that already exist that already have a schedule of meetings. And in those cases, sometimes we'll just use those dates. Each of the educational sessions are about two hours long. So those you could do kind of back-to-back. And like I said, between those two and the strategic planning, we have that community survey that's out for a month. And then you could do your strategic planning back-to-back, too. So then at the end of that, I need about a month to get my team for research. And we give you a nice, I think it's about 150-page report with all of, it has examples from everything that you did, all of your boards, your strategic planning, all your timeline. We put all of that together for you. And then, like I said, we do research on the things that you've identified that you want to follow through with for projects, so we can link you up with additional resources. Like, for instance, if you wanted to do a pocket neighborhood, these are kind of popular, you know, where you have a whole bunch of houses that you might do, but they have a shared front lawn or some sort of shared amenity. We have a really cute one in Macocada. If that were something you wanted to do, we would provide you with copies of the plan, the bid, how they put it together, the budgets for everything. And we will use those as attachments to your plan. But we don't know what you pick until the very last event, so we need a couple of weeks to do additional research for you.
You mentioned Ida Grove and what they've done. You mentioned Macocada. Any other communities closer to home, this Northwest Iowa, that have utilized this service?
Yeah, I got, I just, we just did the fourth session for Esterville this morning. We just finished the Esterville up. I'm working with three counties to the south of us that are blood recovery communities. So I've got all the city, all the cities in Mills, Fremont, and Harrison counties to the south of us. Mapleton in Monona County is going, and then Monona County itself is going to be going in this next round. O'Brien County is thinking of applying as a county, but I have not heard back from them about whether they're going to go in this round. But we also have been doing Newton, and Keokuk, and Leon, and Lamoni, and Springville, and Central City, and Creston. And so we've had quite a few communities that are going through right now.
Yeah, it sounds like a win-win. We get the data we need, plus a $5,000 shot in the arm to get started.
So...
Yes, you do. You get that. And the other thing is that, you know, it's virtual, but it's extremely interactive. So you're not going to be sitting there just listening to somebody talk to you. Even the educational sessions are built, have a lot of dialogue that's built in, so that as you're, as you're working as a group, everything builds upon it, upon itself, so that each session you're building on to what you've already discussed. So as a group, you're also kind of having opportunities to work together in planning, in analyzing the statistics for your community, and talking about the issue, and then coming up with specific plans that you want to follow through with. My understanding from Kurt was that your group is really active and wants to get going on something, and could use this as the structure, kind of the framework, that you could kind of attach the ideas that you want to move forward with now, and that this might be a good time to do that. So we expect that if your application's going on April 1st, we'll have announcements out to people before May 1st, and it starts as soon after that as you want to.
Great.
Abby, these educational sessions, are they morning, night, evening?
Whatever, whatever works for you. We do, some communities, you know, like my little, my real rural ones, my real tiny rural communities, you know, most of those folks that are city council members, they work in another town during the day. So I've got some sessions that are going in the evening. Like I said, if you have a group that already meets at a certain time, we can build it around there. Some people, a couple of communities have done it over a lunch hour, so at least one hour of it's a lunch hour, and the other part might be starting at 11:00 or, you know, ending at 1:00, something like that. So, you know, we're open to whatever works for your group.
The committee, go ahead, Tom. No, go ahead.
So Abby, this is Councilman Eggers. Thank you for your time today. A question in regards to the scope of the results from your assessments. We've, of course, always looked at new development for housing and opportunities, but we also are looking at redeveloping segments of our community, you know, existing community and properties as well, some urban renewal. Through your experience with this program and the assessments that have come out of this process, does it include that wider scope of, you know, of recommendation?
Oh, yeah. You know, we, part of your application that you put in is going to be asking you for a lot of documentation. And even before we start the first session with you guys, we're going through your comprehensive plan. We're going through existing housing needs assessments. We're looking at your zoning codes in particular. We're looking at a lot of different things, and kind of evaluating, you know, what you have available in your communities. And we have another piece that's called the Rural Housing Readiness Assessment Workbook. And it really covers about nine areas of housing in your community, everything from single-family, multifamily, but also things like your zoning, code enforcement, nuisance enforcement, infrastructure. So looking at, you know, street sidewalks, sewers, sanitary, storm, recreational, transportation. Another issue that's really hot for us in rural parts of Iowa is broadband, especially now since the pandemic. We're finding out our homes are also our workplaces and our schools. And so broadband is a big issue that we're dealing with, in conjunction with housing. So housing gets at a lot of other community and quality of life issues in the community, because it's just kind of a nexus, it's a physical nexus that kind of branches off to discussions about economic development, talk about, like I said, quality of life-related issues, trans- talk about, like I said, quality of life-related issues, transportation, services that are available in the community, and just kind of long-range planning. So for each community is a little bit different. So we try to identify what is different or special, or what are special challenges that particular communities are facing. Like I said, I have the three counties that are working with flood recovery. That alone is their special issue, is that they are recovering from a natural disaster. Some communities, I'm going to guess that you guys are probably farther ahead in understanding how to do strategic planning than some of the really little communities that we're working with. So I would think that you would be more like Esterville. Esterville's kind of on top of things, but they just kind of wanted some structure and some way to kind of identify what priorities they want to focus on and get a team put together to start approaching about financial resources and coming up with buy-in in the community, how to explain these things in the community. And so at the end, you get that nice big report. It is a thing that you can share with your involved stakeholders. We do ask for your committee to be very intensively connected to the stakeholders of housing. So it would be city council people, your zoning people, county folks, but also local bankers who make the housing loans, other financial places, like it might be a credit union, it could be a real estate person. If you have contractors in the community that maybe build one or two houses that might be interested in building more houses, if there's somebody who flips houses. We also look at new, people who are new to the community and their experience of trying to find housing. And in particular, for most of the communities we're working with, the two populations that we're seeing are first-year teachers at the school having impossibly hard challenges finding housing. We have young teachers driving all over Northwest Iowa looking for housing. Like for instance, in Esterville this morning, they were pointing out that most of the first-year teachers are all living in the Lakes area rather than Esterville and driving in from there. So that's been a challenge. Also, any healthcare opportunity, if you have a hospital or clinic, that's another group of workforce that's having difficulty finding housing. And you might have a larger manufacturer, somebody who is bringing in workers who are driving in from, you know, maybe 20 or 40 minutes away. And we want to isolate some of those and start talking to their employees about what it would take to get them to move to the community.
I appreciate the breadth of your explanation there. It really helps me get a little insight into what we can gain from this. So thank you.
Yes. And so doing, you also answered my question I was going to ask about the committee structure, and you've given us some insight into that as well. I think the key to this is, if we move forward with this, we are committed to it. The $5,000 kind of puts our skin in the game, but we need to commit ourselves to participating, getting people to move forward with it, and then taking that information and making it useful. But from what I'm hearing, this sounds like just what we need.
Yeah. I mean, you probably have had a lot of the statistical stuff available to you, but I think it's the organizing structure. And I think that working with a group when they've had a common experience like that, where they've worked together on a project like this, that's a very orchestrated process that's facilitated, that really energizes teams. It gives teams thinking about how they can work together, who's missing from the table, who they should be talking to, who they could include. I think it kind of helps broaden, you know, broaden the team, extending the reach throughout the community to involve more people in the issues that you discover and spend more time thinking about.
Kurt?
Yeah. Hey, Abby, this is Kurt Strahl. Thanks for taking the time today and your explanation. We certainly appreciate it. It certainly gives us an idea on what to consider. I've got just a couple of questions for you. Number one, the cost for us is $5,000, correct? Would that be to submit the application? Do we need to have the authorization for the $5,000 when we submit it? Or when does that need to get submitted to you?
No, sometime after. After you're approved, there's a little program agreement that they do, and you can do it at that time. They just send an invoice. You can pay it whenever you want to.
Okay, perfect. And then, so essentially, I think for us as council, what we need to, mayor and council, what you guys need to consider is, we did also solicit two quotes for full-blown housing study, as we talked about before. Just for your reference, that's going to cost anywhere between $15,000 and $18,000 for a full-blown study, which is independent to Sheldon. This, as Abby said, you know, is going to cost us, you know, potentially 5,000, which is then redeemed potentially through a grant, and then another $5,000 to implement into however we see fit. Seems like a win-win. And what I really like about this program and the way Abby explained it is, it gets our community stakeholders at the table through these workshops, and it really identifies what our true issues are. As we've kind of worked through this during budget, I think that's really what we're trying to identify is what are our issues? What is, or what are we looking for? Affordable housing? Is it more ground? Is it urban revitalization, you know, and some redevelopment? So I think this, for me, and I know Kiana's been on part of this as well a little bit, on the O'Brien County side through the county, seems to be the best way to go based on the dollars. And, you know, so kind of a recommendation through the governor too, with all the good work that they're doing through Empower Iowa with housing, and this is them putting their best foot forward and providing tools for us as communities to get these assessments done. And so I think it's a win-win. And I think it's a great opportunity for us to move forward. And so if we do want to move forward, and Sam and I were just kind of talking offline here for a minute, I just think we would need authorization from the council to solicit the application. It is a tight turnaround with April 1. With our next council meeting not being until March 24, I think we can take action today to solicit authorization for us to work on that application and get it submitted prior to April 1. I think would be a good way to kind of move forward.
I guess I would be comfortable making a motion for that authorization if it is a motion item that we authorize for these funds.
I would support that because I just looked back, 2015, goal-setting housing was mentioned numerous times. So.
Yeah. And everything, goal-setting sessions since then has come up.
Yep. And one note to that, Brad is 100% right. And, you know, one of the responses we had to that is, we did a housing needs assessment in 2016 as well through IEDA, and that was required as part of the Iowa Workforce Housing Tax Credit Program, which did leverage for us Eagle Construction Project and a number of other multifamily projects. So it has been worked on. Assessments have been done previously. But this will get us up to speed on now what are our targets based on other development and some of the other things that have happened.
This will give us legs to follow through on our goal on housing that we've made. So I agree. I would second a motion of that nature. Brad hasn't already.
If we could identify as part of the motion that the funding would be local option sales tax, but that money, funding wouldn't be released until necessary, and it would be on a future bill list when the time comes. But if we could include that as part of the motion, that would be good.
All right. We'll amend my motion to add the funding source of the local option sales tax to the $5,000.
Okay.
I just have a question before I second. You know, what stake does the SCDC have in this for housing study? We sell the housing lots. They recoup the benefit from it. So should they have some skin in the game? Kurt?
Certainly can bring it up to the group. We obviously have skin in the game because I'm not about it. Housing is pressing need for SCDC. We're 100% vested.
Well, and the money's coming back.
Well, yeah, I know that, but.
Money's coming back, and if approved, we're getting $5,000 on top to implement.
Let me ask, let me ask a question, clarification for me, though. The program that Abby has eloquently laid out for us, and we know the cost of that is 5K with a 10K return. But the study that was mentioned earlier of costing 15 to 18K, was that you, Kurt, to mention that?
Yeah, yep.
Is that something that has to be done prior to this assessment? Or is that part of the assessment?
No, Abby can maybe speak to that too. It would be independent of. I mean, I would suggest doing one or the other, not both.
Not both. So we don't need the study to be done prior to the assessment?
That is correct.
It's one or the other?
Correct. Do you agree with that, Abby? I mean, this is, the housing needs assessment through IEDA and I would say the extension is completely different. We're getting a lot of the same.
You could, you could have them both going simultaneously if you wanted to, but there's no requirement that you do a housing needs assessment first or ever, you know? And there's no requirement that you do this program to access any of IEDA's funds either. It's just that IEDA wanted to create something that helps communities implement, really focus more on project implementation and away from the study being the end product. They want the end product to be some housing.
I will amend my second to Wayne's.
Any other discussion? Will you read the motion so we know what we're voting on, please?
Authorized to work on the application with IEDA with the funding source being local option sales tax.
Okay. Are you ready to vote?
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Brewster?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Thank you, Abby.
Yes, Abby, thank you for joining us today. The information is, appears very valuable, and I'm hoping to hear from you again. I don't know what your role would be down the road, if you would be involved at that point or not, but.
I'll probably be one of your teachers.
All right, very good.
Probably.
Look forward to it.
Did you make calls? Do you have any questions working on your application?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Okay.
Bye.
Thanks.
All right. How does that dovetail into you, Kiana? Come forward.
I did ask Abby quite a few questions, so I suppose I better follow up.
For the record, please state your name and your role. I'm sure she was as succinct in her answers as with you as she was with us.
Yes, yes. So, thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Kiana Johnson with O'Brien County Economic Development Corporation. And I can honestly say I'm really happy to be here. After last year, it's nice to be here and see everyone in person and to talk about what we've been doing. So thank you for the opportunity. First of all, I want to start out thanking you for your partnership and support over the years. I think O'Brien County Economic Development, the City of Sheldon, Sheldon Chamber and Development, we have established a really good working relationship, and I really appreciate. I think by working together, we can get a lot more done. We're much more successful. So, thank you. For those of you who aren't familiar, our funding source, and I see Sam included, our 28 to E agreement in, on the agenda there. We are funded solely off contribution dollars. So we get contribution dollars from each community, and then also from the O'Brien County Board of Supervisors. In addition to that, we solicit contribution dollars from the local banks and businesses. So roughly, we have about $160,000 budget. We, maybe closer to $170,000 budget we work with every year. So, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in my report, how we leverage those funds as well. We do have a board member that represents each community in O'Brien County, and then the O'Brien County Board of Supervisors, every year, representative takes turns being on our board. So this year, our supervisor is Dan Frederickson, and he represents District 5. They go in order. So that's how we just rotate them off. And then your voting member is Kurt. So anytime you have comments or questions, you're welcome to contact anybody on the list, myself, or talk to Kurt. We welcome that. I always start out talking about our revolving loan fund, our gap financing. I know Sheldon has one as well. And our two programs do work together. So we can both add gap dollars to a business project, and we have done that quite a bit over the years. Our revolving loan fund started in 1993. We made our first loan. We started with $50,000. Over the years, we've applied to the USDA for their IRP funds. In 2006, we got $500,000. In 2014, we had a situation come up where we were out of funds. We had two projects approved, and we needed additional funds. The City of Storm Lake had an IRP that they weren't using, so they were given an option by the USDA to return it to the federal government. But then when we had a need, they gave them the option to also give it to us. So Storm Lake, being a good neighbor, gave us their IRP. We took those funds over, and we actually had the funds lent out before we actually closed on the loan agreement with Storm Lake. So they were in desperate need, and we appreciate that partnership as well. 2015, we routed funds already again, a year later. So we wrote a grant, RBDG through the USDA. The state will put forward one application in the entire state. They chose our application because of the history our revolving loan fund committee had in making loans. And we scored ninth out of the nation. So we received an additional $196,910. That was just grant money. So we didn't have to pay that back, and that also went into our RLF fund. And again, those funds were gone right away. So in 2017, we wrote an additional IRP for another $500,000. And today, we have $39,000 of that that needs to be lent out yet, and I have a RLF meeting I'm scheduling for next week. So we will get those funds out too. So all our funds will be out and revolving in. To date, we have approved loans totaling almost $5 million. Last year alone, even with COVID, we did four loans totaling $397,450. Out of the loans we've done, we've done 13 total projects in Sheldon for a total of $1,230,567. So we do have a really good program. We have a great committee that works hard in doing the due diligence to make those loans. And you do have a representative on that committee, and that is Dan Meldes, Dan Mattis from Citizen State Bank. And he's been on the committee, I think, for quite a while. So if you ever have questions or comments, again, you can talk to me or contact Dan revolving, regarding the revolving loan fund. As I mentioned earlier about our foundation, our operation dollars, we use those funds to leverage additional funds. So we do get our $170,000, but we also then match those dollars for grant dollars or the IRP and revolving loan fund dollars. So on the next page, you'll see, to date, we've used our contribution dollars, and we received grant funding in over $263,603. So it lets you know that we are being wise with the money we're getting to do additional programming for the county and creating additional programs. So without your contributions, your support, we wouldn't be able to do that. So thank you. Loans, we did use, for each IRP loan, you do have to have a $50,000 match. So to date, we've been able to get $1,500,000 in loans. Another committee O'Brien County has is the O'Brien County Tourism Committee. And just like Abby said, quality of life is really important. And one of the things we're finding is people want things to do. So when we're recruiting people, when we're trying to retain our youth, oftentimes what we hear is, what is there to do here? So our tourism committee has been very active, and especially in 2020, we went to work right away trying to create things for people to do in O'Brien County that were safe. They could social distance, they could do it on their own. But yet, we're able to get out and about. And so we went to work really fast. We developed four self-guided tours. We developed 13 day trip itineraries. And once we had that done, we realized we actually had the makings for a website. So we developed a website last year. We created a new tourism brochure and a new tourism map, which is at the printer right now, just waiting on final authorization for the brochure. So we created our Instagram page a year ago, and also then created a Facebook page. So I'd like to say, O'Brien County Tourism really stepped up to the plate this last year in trying to provide opportunities for O'Brien County. And it's just something we can continue to build on. So you do have, Chantel serves on that tourism committee for the City of Sheldon. Nancy McDowell also serves as Sheldon representative as far as bringing sites and attractions and ideas representing the City of Sheldon. So we do have an excellent committee, and I should say, all of our committees are volunteers. Nobody gets paid for their time or service on any of these committees. So we really appreciate, I think, when we put the call out for people to come together to help us, we really are lucky and fortunate we live where we do because we always have a lot of people who see the good in trying to do great things for O'Brien County. We also have a Valiaded Egg Steering Committee. And this is a diverse group of producers who work with me in agri-business. So as far as the ethanol plants or the wind farm, any type of dairy recruitment, egg-related industry, they've been an integral part in helping us grow that sector base of the economy for O'Brien County. With that, we integrated Valiadded Trades into our Career Day. So some of the participants we've added to our Career Day lineup include like CSA Grow and AMPI, the cheese plant. And I will talk about Career Day next. Before, during, right before COVID hit us, we were working on a farm ownership succession and planning meeting. We have a lot of farmers who are looking to retire. We have a lot of farmers who are looking to retire, they may not have, you know, family who want to take over the farm operation, and we did have those concerns come to our committee about, how do we do this, you know, we want to keep, you know, a small family farm going, so we were working on that, we had to postpone those plans, but hopefully this fall, we can put that workshop back together. So I do have the value-added egg steering committee members listed below. If you know someone that you think should, or would be a good member, or addition to that value-added egg steering committee, please let me know, along with all our other committees. We're always looking for more people to join us, so if you have someone that you think I should reach out to, please let me know. So Career Day, we just kind of finalized our plans for that. Kurt and I had a conversation with our high school counselors, and every school's different, a lot of businesses are different on what they can do yet at this time, so we did decide on a hybrid option, doing tours in the businesses that we could do, or would allow us to come into, or the schools that would allow the students to go into it, or if we couldn't do that, at least having a representative from that industry or business come into the school and sit on a discussion panel with the students to talk about what the job opportunities are, what their place of business is, talk about it and get some engagement with the students. So with that said, each school chose a different route. Sheldon has chosen to do strictly tours in Sheldon, they will not be leaving the area, so we're lining those up right now. HMS has chosen to just do a discussion panel with businesses, and we are gonna have a committee that works solely on that, but we're looking at providing a sector, representative from each sector, healthcare, manufacturing, agriculture, construction, trucking, so that'll be really interesting, we just need to figure out a way too to get the children, or the students engaged in that discussion. South O'Brien has chosen to do both, they will do tours just in Paulina, and then have a discussion panel. And then, we're happy to say, MMCRU, who's been a participant for the last couple of years, saw a lot of value in our Career Day, and we welcome them to join us to promote our businesses and our industry, so they want to join again this year, and they have chosen to do a discussion panel as well. So Kurt is on the scholarship committee, and he told me tonight that they are going to be meeting. We started last year awarding scholarships to students, and it's a great way to encourage those students to come back to our area. So the point of our Career Day is to bring the students into the place of business, give them exposure to businesses that, and career fields that they probably weren't aware of that we had here, to let them know we have good jobs, we want them to come back, we want them to stay here, and they can, you know, have the quality of life and live in O'Brien County. So it's, this would be our fifth year, is that right? Fifth year. So our fifth year last year, unfortunately, we had to cancel it, so this year too, some of the schools are opening it up to both sophomore students and the juniors who missed last year, so that would be nice to get them included. But I think as we continue to build on this and expand, we'll also probably be doing some surveys, just get some response back from the students. You know, I had one student one year who told me, I drove by, it was a South O'Brien student, he said, I drove by Mill Creek Machining every day on my way to school, I had no idea what went on there, he goes, it was fascinating. I think a lot of our students think these manufacturing plants are dirty, hot, you know, hard-working conditions, and they get inside and see the technology and, and the equipment they're using, and I think they're really fascinated, because they have a stereotype or image in their head, and that's not what it is. So that's what we want to do, is get those students in there so they can realize what these places are and the job opportunities available to them. So, am I a little fast? Do you have any questions or anything for me?
I would just reiterate the value of Career Day, that that's been an ongoing and important part of, you know, creating the culture of our younger residents and knowing what their options are other than just, you know, the college route. So commend you and your efforts in that area, and urge you to continue on, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's been a good partnership, I think it's been a good program, so I appreciate it.
One question I've had, five years we've been doing the Career Day, so those kids are sophomores, three years of high school or two and a half years of high school yet, perhaps college or tech school, whatever, are we starting to see the fruits of those seeds that have been planted?
That's kind of what we're talking about, now we need to start doing that follow-up, you know, to see if we had that impact.
Right.
And if they are, you know, coming back to work. I did have a phone call, and he was not a South O'Brien student, but I had a community who had listed a job posting on their website, and it was coldest day, it was the, that day in February, it was so cold, and this young man called me, and he was from a neighboring community, and he said, I seen this community, had this, you know, job posting, and he said, I want to move back to the area, and I thought, oh my God, who is calling to say they want to move back to Iowa? But that is, you know, it takes the, our, our students who know it's cold here, who know, you know, February is cold, but yet they still want to move back, because this is where their family is, this is where they want to raise their family, and so if they know those job opportunities are there, because trying to recruit, you know, someone who's coming from the south, who's used to warm weather, it's a little harder, so, you know, it's kind of like growing your business from within, we do have to take care of what we have.
Sure.
Show them we appreciate them, and we, they have a future here.
Good. Kiana, how has O'Brien County fared during COVID as far as the business climate goes?
The businesses I've been talking to outside of the Sheldon area, I've had a few who've struggled, and we've worked with them. I have a few who've kind of changed their business format to accommodate, but overall, I'm hearing, you know, they fared very well, so that, that's really good to hear. You know, logistics might have, you know, some steel suppliers, you know, some supplies are a little harder, but they've done pretty good, so I'm happy to report that.
Good. Any other questions for Kiana?
Mayor, I'd just like to just mention too, we do appreciate the collaboration with O'Brien County Economic Development, we've done a lot of things together, and O'Brien County Career Day would be one of them, and you asked kind of what the return is on the workforce and recruitment of Career Day, it may take a number of years yet till we find that out, but, you know, one of the things we've also implemented as part of that is the Homecoming Scholarship Program, and then our Young Professionals Group as well. The idea is now we're able to solicit and promote our scholarships to these kids, and then as they go on to college, our goal is to recruit these kids to come back and enter the workforce, and one of our tools is our Homecoming Scholarship to help recruit them financially to come back, and we're giving out a couple a year, but we'd really like to give out a lot more than two, so we'll figure out ways and avenues to do that, but I just want to say thanks, Kiana, for your collaboration.
Thank you. And we, we did collaborate with the SCDC on their first hometown scholarship too, so we did partner with you on that as well, because I think every little bit we do, there's, it's better than doing nothing, so we're trying, we're trying to think outside the box, and just keep adding to it every year, so we're building up on that momentum.
Well, it was good having you here today as well.
Thank you.
And thank you for your work, we look forward to working together in the future.
I do too, thank you.
You bet.
And again, appreciate the sponsorship and the support and the, and thanks, Sam, sorry, I didn't even thank Sam, Sam's always really so, so nice and helpful, so thank you.
You bet. All right, let's move on then to item 7A, the 2021 sanitary sewer lining project. You have open the public hearing on that now. Are there any questions, public comments regarding the project? Seeing nothing. Motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Brewster?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Prior to the word of the contract, is there anything you want to add, Todd?
Yeah, sure, I have Jason with Beck Engineering on Zoom with us as well. We had a bid opening on the project yesterday, we received three bids, the low bid was HydroClean LLC out of Des Moines at a price of $89,381.25, that was about 5% underneath the engineer's estimate. Jason and his team are familiar with HydroClean, this type project, and recommend approval. I'll stand for questions, or Jason, if you have questions from there.
I have a question for you, Todd. HydroClean did the filtration system at the wastewater, or at the water plant, didn't they?
They did the, they've done the first two cells of the, of media replacement, and they have the other two cells.
And they've been good to work with?
I would say our experience on the filter media project was not terrible, but outstanding.
So do you think we'll have that issue with this project?
So I asked that exact question of Jason yesterday, and his comment to me is, in this capacity and their dealings with HydroClean has.
Okay.
I, I think with the filter project, Brad, first of all, that's not something we hadn't engineered, that's something we went out and just hired. I'm not sure if HydroClean had done something of that capacity before, and the team members that they sent struggled, struggled, struggled to get the task done. They did get it complete, and it's up and operating fine now, it just took them longer than we certainly hoped, and I guarantee you, it took them longer than what they certainly hoped.
I mean, just seeing the name, I seen the trucks out there, and the name here coming up, just a question I had on my mind.
No, no, that's.
They're gonna be worthy of offering the bid.
All right, are there any other questions for Todd or Jason at this time? We're not getting any, so Jason, we're gonna let you off easy today, thank you for your work on this, at this time.
That sounds good, look forward to it.
Yeah. All right, then we have the resolution there, indicating awarding of the bid.
Mayor?
Yes.
The resolution that's linked is slightly different than the standard resolution that Angie uses, the, this resolution that's linked is the one from Beck, she has one that's a little bit different, but it's basically the same, so it's the same as what's been done with past projects.
All right. So at this time, entertain a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Kent?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
All right, moving forward then to item B under New Business, Status, Status Hearing on the Funded Activities for the Village Northwest Community Development Block Grant Award. As part of the process, one of the requirements is that we have a mid-bid, or mid-construction report, or, and this has to be read, so I would just like to read this quickly, so we are in compliance with the award stipulations. This public hearing on the status of Community Development Block Grant Funded Activities is being held to comply with citizen participation requirements of Section 507 of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1987. The City of Sheldon was awarded $600,000 in CGBG funds on August 2nd, 2019, to assist in constructing two ICF ID homes on the Village Northwest Unlimited campus in Sheldon. The need to complete this project derived from leadership at VNU as part of their process of planning and constructing several new intermediate care facilities for intellectual disabilities on campus. The reason for constructing these new buildings is because the older facilities, which have been in existence since Village Northwest started as handicap village of Northwest Iowa in the 70s, are not meeting the physical and medical needs of the clients who are living in the intermediate care facilities on campus. The primary specific outcomes include the completion of two intermediate care facilities to serve individuals that have intellectual and physical disabilities. The two facilities, two facilities will be constructed on the Village Northwest campus in an area that is currently undeveloped. The new facilities will be the beginning of a process to move clients from other, older buildings on campus that are not meeting the physical needs of clients into new facilities that are able to serve in a much more efficient manner. These two facilities will be approximately 4,760 square feet each, and will be constructed on property that Village Northwest owns on their campus. The Sheldon VNU CDBG project is being funded in part through a Community Development Block Grant provided by the Iowa Economic Development Authority and matching funds through local fundraising capacity. General accomplishments to date include fully enclosing houses five and six, roofing is done, exterior siding is complete, all exterior windows and doors are installed, and most of the ceiling is complete. Electrical and plumbing work continues as did flooring and other finishes. Cabinetry is starting to be installed. A general description of remaining work on this project consists of minor plumbing and electrical, completing cabinetry and flooring installation, as well as other miscellaneous tasks. Final exterior site work will wait until the weather improves. Also, the contractor will be responsible for addressing any additional items requested by the city or Village Northwest Unlimited that are within the scope of the work yet to be completed. The CDBG contract performance target with the Iowa Economic Development Authority ends on August 31st, 2022. It is expected that all project construction and related activities will be completed by the end of the contract performance period. The total project budget as submitted in the application and under contract between the State of Iowa and the City of Sheldon is $2,473,140, of which $600,000 is federal CDBG funds, and 1.8 is local matching funds. The local matching funds are comprised local fundraising capacity. As of February 3, 2021, the time of the last request for payment activity status, $3,885.179 had been requested in federal funds, and 1.18 million in local funds were expended, equating total expenditures of $1.56 million. This, this equals approximately 63.28% of the original estimated project costs. Of the 385,000 requested in CDBG funds, 372,000 or 96.62% is for construction, and 13,000 is for administration. The construction contract was awarded to Pavasikla Construction in the amount of $2.017 million. CD, CDBG grant administration invoices submitted by Northwest Iowa Planning and Development have totaled 13,000 to date. There have been no changes made to the project or the project location, the scope of the project and objectives or beneficiaries, beneficiaries has remained the same. The public hearing is now open to any comments. It was a lot of reading, and it was required, I was asked to summarize, but I was afraid I'd leave something out, so you got the whole enchilada.
Boy, glad you didn't.
They're a nice project.
It is, it is. So, any other comments? No one here other than those of us that have been here all the time, and I see no one listening in that might be commenting? Okay? Anyone listening in by Zoom that cared to comment on the project that Village, Village Northwest? Seeing none, we'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Roll call.
Brewster?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
All right. Finally, moving on then to discussing our schedule for our annual cleanup week. Sam, I think you have some comments perhaps?
Thank you, Mayor, my explanation speaks for itself, for your recommendation, the three of us support Fall Cleanup Week, but we will cheerfully support Spring if you decide you'd like to do that too.
You guys want fall, then it's fall, I would say.
I've had a couple people ask me about if we were gonna move it, and said they liked spring. Sam had mentioned that garbage is always a very touchy subject, so finding that that's what I get the most feedback on. Any others getting comments from anybody?
I got a couple, neighborhood, same thing, that they preferred spring, but their reasonings and logic don't outweigh what I see, could, that fall could be a better time. So I make a motion to remove cleanup to fall.
Okay, is there support for that?
Support.
Any further discussion? And roll call, please.
Brewster?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
All right, moving on then to item eight, anything you'd like to report other than what you've written for us, Sam?
Sure.
Okay. Todd, is there anything else you'd like to add? add?
Yes, sir. Uh, three minor things. Um, number one, if you haven't seen, rec brochures are out. So, uh, registrations are starting to come in for spring and summer activities. People don't have their, uh, I haven't looked yet. Uh, be sure to check the rec page or call Jake to sign up. He's got a lot of stuff on this year. Um, crosswalk on Washington Avenue. We ordered those signs. Unfortunately, there's quite a lead time on those, much more than I anticipated. They're coming next weeks, uh, so we could be a month out yet. Get them installed as soon as they get here. And then lastly, um, either on March 10 or March 24, uh, staff will be bringing you a, uh, grant application for the Region 3 FAST Act, uh, grant. Application will be from last year, repair slash replacement of Western Avenue between Highway 18 and, uh, 16th Street. Application could look a little different than last year, but.
All right.
One of these days, one of these days.
Yeah.
So, do you, do you feel that you have a better, uh, sight on, on what we need to do this time for it?
Um, yeah, Sam and I have done some talking with, uh, some other communities and, and some of the other counties. We're taking a slightly different approach at it, but, uh, in the end, that's gonna be a smaller grant application. But 60% of something.
Yep. Important word of all that is grant. I like.
Exactly. So, we'll be bringing that forward either March 10 or March.
Okay.
Sam?
Uh, on that note, I would ask for the flexibility for the March 10 meeting to, if, to have that on, on the agenda and perhaps a few other items if there's other, typically with a special council meeting, it's only for, um, you know, the item that it was originally called for. But if, but if we, if we give you a heads up and it's published 24 hours in advance, we're okay with, with adding additional items. If, if you're in a knowledge in, in advance, we might do, do that. I won't load it up, but we might have a few other items and maybe a short consent calendar. We will have bills. We will have minutes, for sure.
Make sure the minutes reflect he's not going to load it up.
Yeah, that's.
I suck at that.
That wasn't very nice.
So, anybody have an issue with that?
No.
No, you're good. True.
Todd, uh, the other day I seen something, and I think it was through the rec for a class on coaching girls.
So, I, you'll have to ask Jake, or I'll have to ask Jake to get all the, all the specifics, but we are offering many more, uh, day camps this year than maybe have passed. Uh, and we are also offering, uh, yeah, some, some coach, coaching, I think Coaching 101, for lack of a better term. Uh, the hope is that we can keep the parent and volunteer coach, maybe volunteerism in those items will also.
As well as sportsmanship.
Yeah. So, and I apologize, I don't have those specifics, but, uh, I, I have spoken to Jake about those.
Anything else for Todd? Questions? Kurt, anything else you'd like to add?
No, thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, Scott, anything from you?
No, thank you.
Training for the dog is going well, I assume?
Hasn't started yet.
Hasn't started yet. Oh, that's right.
So, great.
It's mid-March.
It's going great, yeah.
All right.
I think you guys see a picture of the dog, didn't you?
Yes.
I seen Eric showed us one the other day. So, he's excited.
Little chihuahua.
I'll let him go after you first.
Hey. As long as he bips at the heels and bark a lot, that's, that's better, better than anything.
Angie, anything from you today?
No, thank you.
Micah?
No, thank you.
Counsel to my left.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to bring up, we were able to take a trip down to Des Moines last week Tuesday to visit with our local lawmakers about the Lewis and Clark, uh, water funding shortage that we're facing, uh, in regards to getting the federal fund, or the, the state funding for the water tower outside of town to help start our leg of the Lewis and Clark project. It was, uh, uh, it was very educational for me, uh, seeing how the sausage gets made. I think it solidified, uh, the fact that I don't want to ascend any higher in politics than where I am right now. Uh, it, the comment was made that, uh, the chances of, of our, our funding application being approved was less than 50/50. So, uh, we weren't terribly optimistic, but you, we had to try. Um, and should this, uh, should the funding from the appropriations committee not be there, uh, we'd end up kicking the can down the road for the Lewis and Clark project another year. And, uh, it was, it was interesting to see how, uh, uh, you know, we, we were one, we were the only, uh, entity to ask for dollars as a loan as opposed to a grant, but still, we're, we're met by, by some cold feet. So, uh, like I said, I'm comfortable at this level of, of politics, and I do not wish to ascend further, but it was a very, uh, educational, uh, experience. Good to have some, some FaceTime with, uh, our local lawmakers, um, and, uh, got a chance to speak with Governor Reynolds too, and that was, uh, that was a treat. So, uh, yeah, it was, uh, it was, it was a good time, uh, a good learning experience, and, uh, we'll just have to see what happens sometime this month. We'll hear, uh, from, I'm sure, from Troy Larson with Lewis and Clark whether or not anything will come of it, but.
Questions on that? It was a good trip. Counsel to my right, comments. And, uh, I've taken enough time as well, so.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Brewster?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks, Wayne.
On the rec stuff, yes.
So, Wayne, so what's the real issue with funding?
I just, I, I talked to individual legislators having.